How much longer do you want to give Fred? Karen?
That's up to you.
Did he indicate he was coming in?
Yeah, he did. We do have everything ready, Madam Chair.
All right, we'll just go ahead and start then. This is the December 28th, 2020 work session for the Historic Preservat- excuse me, Seward Historic Preservation Commission. And I don't have my little script that Jessica does for me. We don't need to do any of the meeting stuff, do we Karen?
Uh, no, it's just a work session.
So it's technically now called order, correct?
Correct.
All right. Okay. So I guess we're going to start on page one, committees and tasks. I know that you went over this at the December 10th meeting, which I was not at. So I don't want to, um, speak out of turn. So Sue, if you could take this, I would appreciate it.
Right. Well, actually what I'm going to do is, is Tongi. You put this together, um, in terms of the committees. Uh, so maybe put down, you know, tell us what your thinking was. Because I think if we agree on these committees, then we determine tasks and timelines.
I did, and I had some thoughts about that. I spent some time reviewing that this afternoon. So the first thing is, thank you for that. The first thing is that these committees are standing committees for any and all HP business. Okay? So we may need to reprioritize and/or rename or just work a little bit with the committees for this particular task of the signage, uh, project. Also, so I wanted to reorder just for this particular one, how it went and tell you that the way that things have worked, and this goes for the timeline as well, is that right now, the Historic Preservation, Planning and Advocacy folks, so in other words, those who are speaking about historical planning and specifically working on the signs and who's interested in joining us, which we have some great news about that later, and so on, is really the first thing that we're doing, the very first thing that we're doing on timeline, and the very first thing we're doing as a committee, is we are identifying, uh, locations that, uh, per our grants that, that we're going to feature on the walking tour. We're reaching out to those people and we're gathering information about the signs that we're doing and the people who are willing to be involved. So that's the number one thing, and not all committees can always be engaged at one time. That's the first committee. In conjunction with that is the marketing committee that Mary Ann is, um, heading, um, with the Facebook and so on that she's been doing, and she's working a little bit with me, and then we're out there letting people know what we're doing. The other committees that are there, which are the volunteer recruitment and the grants and in-kind will come later, once we have identified what properties want to be involved, how many properties, et cetera, et cetera. Once we've gotten information onto the public, then we will move to a timeline that takes us to the point where we're producing signs and so on, we're getting volunteers, how to put them on, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the, the, the committees that are, that are sitting are fine. The only thing that we do need to come up with, and there was some discussion with the city clerk's office about this, is that we need to have chairs for those committees, because I failed in that, in actually identifying any kind of chair. So we have a group of people doing stuff, but no one necessarily in charge. That presents some type of problem. So the first thing I'd like to say is if we're starting with the Historical Preservation, um, and Planning Committee, which is comprised of Mary Ann, yourself, and Sherri Furlong, we need for somebody to head that committee, if you will, to at least be the person that's reporting back. They'll be working in conjunction with, but we already came up with those other three people on that committee. I'm in agreement with that, as the project heads this particular project, but we need to have a committee chair. For each of these, we need to have a committee chair. I was told that those committees needed to discuss amongst themselves in this meeting and decide that in a public forum. So can we start with that first?
Mary Ann, I want you to be the chair.
I second it.
There you go. Does the committee need a vote, or is that two-thirds of the committee?
We're, uh, willing.
Okay. Okay. Wait, wait, Karen?
Uh, I just, can you clarify for me which committee this is?
This is the historic, I'm sorry, I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but it's the Historic Planning, Preservation, we last one.
Yeah, Historic Preservation, Planning and Advocacy.
And I want to reiterate that those folks that are on it already are doing a fabulous job. I sent a laydown earlier, as you might have seen, we're having tremendous progress. So thank you Sherri, thank you Mary Ann, thank you Sue for that. We're making great progress, um, there. The second committee is the marketing committee.
That's Mary Ann's going to be the chair of Historic Preservation?
Yes.
Okay.
And then for this project, and then into this, and then moving forward. So we have the, uh, the marketing and communications, which at this point is just myself and Mary Ann, but that's only because we originally had Wolf on there as well, and Wolf Gang having stepped off the commission. That's an area where we at some point will need additional help. Mary Ann and I discussed, and really at this point, it's mostly Facebook type of stuff. It will eventually also include doing radio and/or newspaper outreach and so on, as we start working on our efforts, both for the signage project and for other things. For now, for that particular one, being that Mary Ann is the administrator on the Facebook page, I'm definitely not in head of that. So I don't know if you need to, if we need to have, if some, first of all, if somebody else would like to join that committee, if there's a need to have somebody else join that committee, and/or who the chair would be of that committee. Open for discussion.
Is it all right, let's make Mary Ann the chair of that as well?
I'm happy to do that, because it's mainly Facebook. The letter, which is already out, like you said, in the future, I think it's going to be radio and newspaper and stuff like that. And at that point, if we have somebody else in the committee, we can get them to help, or I can just like say, Tongi, you have to be that part.
Well Tongi, you have a pretty good rapport with Wolf, and he's still part of the radio. I think that's why he wanted to be on that committee.
Yeah, and you know, the thing is, you can still be on the committee even if you're not a commissioner. So he could still participate.
I was wondering about that. Why can't we recruit Wolf?
We can.
Yeah.
I was thinking that maybe we could take, you know, the basic verbiage from what's in the letter, just kind of revise it a little bit and send it to him and ask him if he would do a public service announcement about it. And who knows, maybe he'd want to interview somebody from the commission about the project, which I think would be cool too.
I think it'd be cool. So then we have grants and in-kind, uh, which is really, in, in general.
Hold on, hold on. We have made Mary Ann now the chair for the marketing and communications? True? Done? Okay. Karen, did you get that?
Yep, I got it, thank you.
Thanks.
And I also think that was subject to a third person being on the committee. I think we want to be real careful that we don't put too much on Mary Ann.
Exactly.
So as long as you're comfortable with that, Mary Ann, but we need to look for that additional commissioner who can perhaps, um, take some of that.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine with me.
Only because you're the Facebook person, but then there's a lot of other things that they need to happen with marketing and communication.
Right, and then once we find that third person, maybe our committee could just sit down and talk about it, see if they would like to, you know, what their interest is and if somebody else wants to take that part off. Fine with me.
Hey, Tongi? He lost you.
Maybe he went to the bathroom, it's right behind him.
Tongi, you need to unmute yourself?
I did not go to the bathroom, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I was just wondering.
I'm great, so grants, okay, so we're concluded, grants and in-kind, that's funny. Grants and in-kind, um, I have overall projects on the grants, I could use help on the in-kind when we get there. And in-kind specifically means things that we get from local vendors and so on that does not cost us money, which you may know already. So whether it's to help us dig a hole, or to help us give us some signage hardware, or to help us with printing, or whatever it might be, it's folks who are willing to do things with us in local rotary groups or whoever, it's folks who are willing to help give us, um, no-cost assistance.
No, it's no cost to us, but it's credited toward the 40% that we have to match.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm the overall project manager, I'd love for somebody else to be in charge of, of the actual committee itself.
Oh no, I don't think that Tongi gets off the hook here. I, I moved it, we make Tongi the, the chair of this committee.
I'm fine with that, if that's what you guys wish.
You know, I'll second that, Tongi, I will second that, and, um, I would actually hopefully be able to be on that committee as well as I'm in town and you're not.
Okay.
Cheryl, I can work on, uh, if you're going to chair it, um, great, give us tasks, he can send us off.
And I'm happy to help, like.
Yeah. You can always be on the committee, but you've got enough on your plate, but you can always be on the committees sort of ad hoc.
Personally, I don't.
We, we can't ever have more than three of us.
Four, yeah, officially four.
No, three. You can't have more than three commissioners.
Right, I understand, I understand. But she is involved in rotary, she has a lot of connections. We're happy to do the work if we had a list.
That's what I was going to say, is I don't want to be in the committee, but if it comes time to, you need help from rotary, I can like make the connection.
Right, you have contacts. She has contacts.
I know, and they've already, and they've already served and helped us.
Right, all we need Cheryl is a list of her contacts, and then you and I can go after them.
Oh, yeah.
That's kind of what I was referring to.
Yeah, right on.
Tongi can be in charge when he shows up to town.
Okay, Karen?
All right.
Uh, just a point of order, is if Sue, you join this, right now I have just Tongi and Cheryl listed for grant and in-kind donations, uh, so.
Yes ma'am.
Sue, if you join this, you guys can't converse with Mary Ann, uh, for, uh, suggestions and stuff.
We understand that, we, Karen, we understand that, all she has to do is give us a list of contacts. That's not conversation, it's a list.
Okay, and that's something that can be provided in the work session too.
I can't, yeah, I can't get in her brain, and we understand there's, there's a limit, but that doesn't mean that she can't hand us a list, so that Cheryl and I can do the work. Sherri, if you have people, you know, the whole point is, we all have different contacts.
So, as long as we're having an actual meeting or a work session, these committees we all can have input on. It's, it, it's when we're in the committee by itself, that we can't have more than three commissioners involving them at the same time.
Or doing emails.
In, in a work session like tonight, let's say. So we've got this grant in-kind donation filled with Tongi, myself and you Sue, and we would like to talk with Mary Ann about her rotary contacts. It's perfectly legal by Robert's rules, because we're in a public meeting.
Correct.
Right. And that's, that's, that's basically all we're looking for is, you know, anybody that has a suggestion of somebody that might do in-kind donations, that would be your, my place to go do that. All we need is the name of the person or organization.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so we're, is that all right Karen, is that clear?
Yeah, and the other point I'd like to make is if, if she does want to, if you guys do want to discuss a list of people, that would be something that Mary Ann could present as a laydown in, in a future work session.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect, that, yeah, and there's always a way to do it, we just have to figure out how we're going to do it.
Right, because I did, I did see that, uh, in the application process for the grant, it was noted that you guys were going to be planning several work sessions to get the committees together to discuss.
Right.
So.
You're going to see that ramping up here, as we now are identifying the list, which we'll talk about a little bit later, with the laydown that I've, that I've sent, but there's been great progress made by that committee.
Yeah.
So, um, then that leads us to volunteer recruitment and engagement, which engagement is keeping the volunteers engaged, and we currently have, I believe, you, uh, chair, and then, uh, uh, Fred on that as well too. I think we probably need some additional people there, but being that you're the one that's there tonight, you might get voted in as chair of that.
Well, okay, that makes sense.
So to be clear, what's going to happen is we're continuing to identify locations, we're getting letters back from people, which is great, I'd love to share some of those. People are enthusiastic, they're signing on. Now we're going to do the research, we're going to produce the signs, we're going to get signs made, then we'll get the volunteer recruitment for putting signs in, whatever those things might be, but we're, right now, we're getting past that first initial stage. So there's going to be a lot more exciting stuff, and then the engagement is really just about saying thank you to people, remember to say thank you to people who are volunteering with us, making sure we get their hours reported, all that kind of thing. So I think that we're set then, if we're all in agreement on the four committees and who's in charge.
I just wanted to make sure that was Cease, that's going to be the chair for the volunteers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, before we move on, I do want to say that, um, by our January meeting, I'd like everybody to have thought about additional work sessions, because I think that we're now at a, in a phase, there's just a lot that's got to be done, that's going to need to be done, um, in gathering more than just once a month.
Agreed.
And that could be something you guys can discuss tonight too.
Okay.
So you, you guys can discuss a, a schedule to set up those work sessions tonight, so it's all set if you wanted.
Thank, thank you by the way, Karen, for putting together this packet, and it was very helpful, I've reviewed it thoroughly, and so I have some ideas, a revised timeline as well, which is part of what we're doing tonight.
Right.
Okay, well, we're moving now right into the timeline. So.
So.
Go ahead.
Yep, so timeline is changed because of obviously, uh, of COVID and so on, but here's what I have for notes. So October to December 2020 was contacting property owners, doing research, developing spreadsheets to track all that information. I can repeat this too. Uh, contacting Peter at the signage company, Corvus Designs for signing contracts, putting information out via Facebook. Those are the things that we were doing between October and December, those things have actually occurred, but that's the revised timeline. So contacting property owners for interest, researching properties, we're continuing to do that, spreadsheets, track all information, contacting Corvus Designs, uh, Peter at Corvus Designs to discuss the overall signage options, and then doing some type of Facebook promotion of the houses. Those are the things that we've been doing. December through March, we continue on with template design and continued research. We decide what stakeholders can help us, which is part of our discussion tonight, as far as local historians and so on, whether they're Doug Capra, Lee Bolesky, Mary, um, Barry, whomever those folks are as well, other local folks, whether we're involving partner organizations such as the, um, Resurrection Bay Soci- uh, Resurrection Bay Historical Society, the library, and so on. That is what's happening between December and March. What is a strike on there at this point, where we need to have some discussion tonight, is we're really focused more on getting the signs produced, the language for those signs, and those signs in the works, as opposed to necessarily working on the map, which was previously designed. The map is going to have to work towards the tail end of this meeting, we're nowhere near where we're at the point of putting a map together. So that needs to be changed into going into sometime in May, in April, in May, when we would be producing a map, which wouldn't be a huge deal, to sit down and do a map, and then at some point in June, we would be doing some type of a ribbon cutting, or in late May, early June, we'd be doing a ribbon cutting or opening. I do need to look at potentially having somebody step up and say that they'd be willing to work on the map with the city, and I know that Valerie had mentioned, Ms. Kingsland had mentioned that there's GIS information and so on, that would be a great concurrent thing to do, would be to work on what the map might look like as we identify sites, but we're just not at that point yet. And I think that's definitely not something I want to put on Mary Ann or myself at this point, so.
I'd be glad to volunteer for that map-making project.
Well done. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome, awesome.
I think we actually could, could probably use another committee to do that, take that on, because I would see that as being quite a bit of work.
Mm-hmm.
So hopefully we'll have all the information that she needs, and then it's just a matter of, of working with the city on getting the appropriate map.
And there is a map that the city had some copies of, that they provided us at one point, it was done by the Chamber of Commerce, that was a point of interest map, but it wasn't just historical, and it had a lot of extra stuff, so Commissioner Furlong, that's a great starting point, thank you so much for volunteering to do that. And then we're looking at a June, we're looking at a late May, early June ribbon cutting event, possibly I think late May, um, and then.
Isn't that preservation month? Historic preservation?
Yeah, that's true. Totally, that'd be perfect. And then in June, we could have a follow-up meeting, like maybe at the Pavilion or Brown and Hawkins or somewhere, to give out maps, to have a promotion of the event and so on. We could do a ribbon cutting without having to have a big event. But at a later time, in June, we could really debut the tour in some public setting that wouldn't cost us anything. So that's how I see the timeline is playing out, um, at this point, and I know that before we do that, then we probably have other business we need to discuss, then I know it's on our agenda for tonight, but that's what I see on timeline, revised.
And that, that meets the grant specs, right? I'm assuming that meets the grant.
I will have to take whatever notes we have from tonight and just send a note to Jean Aire, and not to Jean Aires anymore, um, to Judith Bittner, and let her know that where we are track-wise, and I'll probably work with the city, because I know the city's been doing the reporting of hours, this and that, by the way, my advertorial, everybody get their hours in this month for what you've done in December towards the project. And then we should be sending a report here at the end of December, I think, to Judith Bittner and saying, this is what we've done so far, these are the committees that we've set up, these are the, the, the houses that are, are the locations that we've already said that they're interested, this is our timeline, post-COVID and everything. We need to send them a very short report, um, with what we've done, and also include our volunteer hours, and of course, we have no expenditures yet. So I think that would be very helpful with what we've done tonight, what we're reporting on, to be able to accomplish that. I feel good about where I'm, we really got caught up. What's that?
One thing that you guys could do, since it's going to be time to submit our hours in the next couple of days, I think, is when you send them to Valerie to CC me your hours too, and I can add them to that little table that I made for the report last time, and I can give them to you Tongi, so you have it.
Uh-oh, your city clerk has her, has her hand raised, you better get the okay on that. I love Sue.
I, I need to confer with Brenda if you can actually do that. If everybody can email, if everybody can CC you, Mary Ann, their hours. So let me, let me get with Brenda on that, before you guys proceed with that, that part.
Okay, because before, I had just asked Valerie to give me the hours, because that seemed the easiest thing, but she had not been basically compiling them yet, so that she had that information available to just send me, that's why she told me to contact everybody to find out, so that's what we had to do before.
Yeah, but she, she may not be up on Open Meetings Act maybe. It's that, it's that when you start to email across each other, that's where Open Meetings Act can become a problem, so. Let me, let me talk with Brenda on that.
So what, all right, but Deputy Clerk, what we could do is ask that Ms. Kingsland, um, CC you, and you can send this out to us, correct?
I'll have to confer with Brenda on that, just to make sure.
All right.
And I'll, I'll send you guys an email tomorrow about that.
Okay. So because it would only be going to Mary Ann. So it'd be from Ms. Kingsland to you, the clerk, and then to Mary Ann.
Yeah, and I think that might work.
And then to report.
Sherri does have a question.
Sherri?
Uh, I hope this is not too, uh, I hope it's somewhat of an appropriate place to ask this question. Tongi, this expressly directed to you, on page 43, this was in some of the other, uh, lay, uh, printouts that we had in, in other months, but I didn't notice it really, but this time I noticed it. This is a, um, invoice from Fossil Industries on page 43 of the pack packet. And at the bottom, the total, this was all about the sign, I guess, I'm assuming it's the one you have on your property. At the, the bottom, the total is $13,215. And so when I looked at that total, it scared me, because we could only build two signs for that price.
It's a quote for 25.
Fossil Industries gave me a quote, Fossil Industries, there's only one that's been considered, uh, op, op, option, the other is coming directly from Corvus Designs, and Fossil Industries had sent me a, a quote for a number of signs, after they finished my sign. I said, so if you were to make a sign like mine, and we needed 15 or 20, I don't remember what the amount was, how many, how much would it cost? So it was nowhere near $13,000, it was, or a number of signs.
Uh, if you'll look for the quantity at the top, Sherri, you'll see 25.
Each sign is $414.
Okay, thank you for straightening me up.
No, it's all good, and they're not the only vendor, but we try to go to more than one vendor, so Fossil Industries is one, the other one is Peter at Corvus Designs, that he has some people too, who would provide not only signage, the cost of signage, but also possibly the aluminum posts, because I have another vendor, an anchorage that would be able to do the posts, but they might be more, so we're going to get a couple quotes on each one. That's a valid concern. But I think we're straight. Because there's the sign design, which is the most expensive part, the actual signs themselves don't cost that much. It's the sign design and the time spent on sign design is the most expensive, so, valid point though.
Yes. Uh, yes, Mary Ann? I'm just kind of getting back to what we were talking about, as far as coming up with the cost for labor. My, my whole goal is just to make it easy and give the information to Tongi for his report. So, uh, Karen, if you can figure out how we can get that, without breaking any rules, that's, uh, what my hope is, that's my hope and dream is to give Tongi the information for his report, but if there's no way to possibly do that in real life, then maybe there's some other way.
We can, just in an open meeting.
Not actually wanting it for you, Tongi is going, Tongi is, 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 um, keeping track as well, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, but let's back up one step and try that Valerie Kingsland, that Ms. Kingsland's going to be the one that's going to supply the hours and/or the report with consultation from us. We'll provide her the information, but as, as the signature authority of the city, she will be providing a report here, um, probably, I think it's usually within 30 days, it's December 30th, so she'll be providing a report saying what we've done and how much it costs.
Right, I know, but Mary Ann is talking about you, and she wanted to get the information on our hours to you. My question is, so in essence, we're really asking that, um, Ms. Kingsland CC the clerk, and the clerk popping you in, Tongi, on those hours. Is that really what we're going for here, Mary Ann?
Yeah, because the bottom line is, Valerie, to my knowledge, has not compiled all these hours into a format that she could give Tongi and say, this is how much the commission has put in so far. I have done that for our last meeting, just because I was trying to report on what we did, so I asked her for it, she did not have it, she told me to ask. She told me to ask people individually for that and I put it together. So what I already have is already summarized except for this month. So I thought, well, we're going to be doing it in the next couple of days. It's easy enough. You just tell me, I'll add it to what we already have. And then Tommy will have that rather than her having to start from scratch and compile the whole thing. Eventually, I'm sure she will, she will do that. I'm just not sure if she's done that yet. So I'm just trying to, you know, provide you with the information as simply and quickly as possible if you're going to put this report together. But for me to do that, I just need to know what it is, what happened this month.
Okay. Um, Deputy Clerk?
So I, I, I guess I just need to be, uh, get a clarification on this. Who's compiling the report that's going to have the hours, volunteer hours?
I believe that report will come from, from, uh, from Ms. Kingsland. And she will send any and all official report to, uh, to the state, to Judith Bittner because in fact, even the accepted agreement was signed and ratified by City Council, went from Ms. Kingsland to the state and then from the state back to Ms. Kingsland. So she's the appropriate authority and she has identified, she as well as another member, and I can't remember off the top of my head, I apologize, of administration are responsible for making sure that we turn in receipts, that we turn in hours and that reports are turned in on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
Okay. I misunderstood. I thought, I thought you had said that you, Tommy, were going to be submitting a report to Judith Bittner for this.
I will be involved in providing information on what we've done so far. So there's some truth to that. But then Ms. Kingsland will submit.
But you'll be.
So I think there's some truth to what you're saying.
You'll be discussing it with Valerie is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we're, we're correct on both fronts.
So there may not be an issue anyway because Valerie's the one that needs to get the hours. Okay. I'll still bring this, I'll still bring this up with Brenda.
Just double check, just double check, Karen, it's okay.
Yep.
Just clarify. It's all right. It's all good.
Mary Ann, can you, um, I think I've lost the original point. Can you tell me what it is you want?
Actually, I really don't want anything. I was just trying to be helpful. I just, I thought, I thought that Tommy was going to be putting something together soon and that part of what would be helpful to Judith would be like the amount of hours we put in. And since I had already basically compiled all that except for this last month, I thought it would be easy for me to just have that in. Give him the number and he could put it in his report. But it's really not my, my responsibility to do this.
Right.
Or, or to do the hours, so I really don't care.
Right.
Um, if Valerie can do it all, good. It's just that when I asked her for it, she hadn't even started on it yet, so I don't think she's there yet.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Go ahead, answer your question.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that you were covered, that, you know, everybody was, you know, we all had the same understanding. And I was going to say, well, we could also just let, let each other know what our hours are, what we've done each month as we gather in our meetings, you know? We're there, so we're not violating any Robert's Rules.
Right. And that, that's the other thing too is, um, for the last meeting, I had kind of submitted a, a report for our committee that was summarizing everything we had gotten done today. And I put the hours that we all put in as just part of that report. So my plan was for every meeting, I'll submit a report and see what we got, what we've gotten done so far and just use that same report as a template. So if people do give me their hours, I can continue to update that as just part of my regular report. So also for that reason, if people want to give it to me, then I will include that. And if it's a problem, I'll just take that off the report. Doesn't have to be, but it's kind of a, just trying to be thorough. Yeah.
Well, I sure appreciate your thoroughness.
Thank you.
Okay, so Tommy, have we run down the timeline? Okay? And then we have the resolution put in here. I'm assuming at this point, this is our grant forward, is that right?
Is there a question to me?
Anybody.
I think we had a vote that we needed to get through tonight and some discussion of that. That's probably the next thing.
Well, that's during the special meeting.
Say that again.
I think there was a vote tonight regarding size and so on, so I, I won't step into that part. I'm, I'm happy to stop talking.
Okay. So the special meeting portion will be where we have our vote. But in the work session, we do want to, um, either create a resolution or the verbiage behind what it is that we want on our signs. Crediting, um, like if it's, the museum is the source that we got, you know, photo from, if, if it's, um, Doug Capra that we got historical data from, um, this is what we want to discuss and then decide on and vote as to whether we accept or not accept in the, in the special meeting tonight. But during the work session, we're going to talk about how we want that to be and what we think about it in general. So, Mary Ann, how do you feel about taking the lead on that?
That's fine. I created, uh, something that's in our packet about this. It was all related to, uh, the sign design. So the bottom line is, the sign design itself is determined by Peter, not us. We, our role is that we come up with the story. We come up with the story of the sign. And, uh, we do that by talking to the owners that were individually assigned to you, talk to you by phone or email, et cetera. And we can talk to these folks and ask them what history they have, what historical photos or artifacts they, you know, maybe we could take pictures of, what do they have available that we can use? And then we develop the narrative for the sign. Um, a thought that I had today that I just wanted to pass on, it might be helpful, is to say, for example, you're going to talk to somebody, to ask them what kind of information they have. You might set up a Zoom meeting like this because then you could just talk to them. You can record the meeting. So instead of having to take notes the whole time or trying to talk to somebody on the phone, you just talk to them, have a conversation, but have it recorded so you can go back and, and have a record of all the notes that they, they give you for the history. Um, whatever we develop, so if you're out talking to a particular property owner and you're going to develop this narrative, it needs to be no more than two hundred and fifty words. And we can ask them about, you know, the story and also what photographs they have. The photographs have to be of a certain quality of resolution, three hundred dots per inch or greater, or if they're less than that, it's possible we could use them, but they just want to be smaller on the sign. So basically, our role is to talk to these people, come up with the story, come up with the narrative, find out what photos, et cetera, are available, put something together. And then Peter has asked us, um, to send this to him in one voice. So when we had this meeting, which was myself, Tommy and Sue with Peter of Corvus, um, Designs, what he suggested is that we all send our stuff to one person who reviews it, edits it, so it's in one voice. And that person worked with him and sent him the information and do kind of like the back and forth edits. And so at that meeting, we decided that person would be me. So, um, and, you know, once, once I've kind of, you know, done edits to make it look like it's in one voice and I go back and forth with him and we kind of come up with a more final design that I can share with everyone, see, you know, what you can think about this. But that way, we're, we're just keeping it one person dealing with him because that'll make it a lot cheaper for us to do the sign work rather than him having to deal with five different commissioners. So that, that's kind of how the sign design works. Um, you can see in the template that there's different, or in the packet, there's different templates that he sent us. And that's kind of like, what do these signs basically look like? And so these are just examples. We talked to him on the phone and said, well, we kind of like the one for the Cable House, but we're really free to use different ones. It just depends what, what works best based on the number of photographs that you have come up with or your history, et cetera. The ways they're going to kind of connect to us and look like, um, you know, that they're Historic Preservation Commission signs rather than some of these other ones that were done by other people is we'll be using our brand colors. And those colors basically are coming from our logo, which we decided is, uh, kind of like what we came up with for, uh, can you see that? Yeah, sorry.
It's in the process.
It's hard to do and, yeah. So it's kind of like that off, like, kind of like the, the green with the black lettering. So that's basically what we said is our logo that will go on the sign, plus our color scheme. So maybe the outside of the sign, the framework around the sign, instead of it being black like some of these in the pictures, it might be that olive green color, for example. So, um, so that's how that kind of works. Um, let's see. As we're talking to people, we can, um, we can let, let them know that there may end up being more interest in signs than there is money. This go, go around doing a sign for everybody, but at least they will still be part of the walking tour and their, their information will be listed on, you know, like the walking tour map. And that hopefully in the future, we'll be asking for additional grants and money. So even if they don't have a sign this time, they're on the list, we've done the research and we can get them next time. Um, one thing that I think would be important is for everybody, as you're going through this process, different commissioners are assigned to different property owners, is you kind of make a list as you're going through and you realize, okay, this is the story I want to tell, but I need these specific types of photos of this history, things that you, you need but you don't have. If you make a list of all the things that you need and say, for example, you know that there is a great photo of this particular house that you need and it's credited, credited in one of these, uh, history books to like Resurrection Day Historical Society, you make a note of what you need and where you think you can find it. And I'd like for us to compile all that stuff together into one document and share it with each other first because, for example, maybe Sherry's like, oh, I'm working on this, the Gary House, and I really need a picture of this, but I don't have it. But if she puts it on the list and we share it, I might say, hey, I found that exact thing you're looking for in this book. So that we can kind of share and help each other first. And then after that, then we can take one document and send it to, say, Resurrection Day Historical Society and say, we need these twenty pictures, can you help us or can you help us with this research? Rather than five commissioners every day mailing them and going, I really need this, I need that, because that'll just make them go crazy. So let's try to be efficient and compile our stuff and do it in batches. And we'll do the same thing with the signs. Like when we're working on the sign, I'll work with Peter and we'll do like five signs at a time because all that kind of stuff will help save us time and money. Um, let's see. And so also as Cheryl was mentioning, well, let's see, let me backtrack for a second. As we've been going through this process, we sent out the letter and Tommy was mentioning how amazing it is. We've gotten all these responses back and so far, every single person has said, yes, I'd love to do that and they've been excited about it, uh, looked up on it. A lot of people have said though, oh, I'd love to do that, I'd love to have a sign, but to tell you the truth, I don't have hardly any history on, on my house. So they're, they're excited to work with us so we can help them figure this out. Some of them have some stuff and some of them don't. But so far, and Tommy put together a laydown about this, I think there's been seventeen people that have gotten back to me and said, yee, I'm interested, I'd like a sign. So that's fantastic. In addition, another thing is I sent a message to the city and said, hey, there's these seven different places on city property I think would be great for a sign, like some places on Fourth Avenue or Woodlawn Cemetery or places along the waterfront trail, different things like that. So Jackie is kind of the person that's in charge of all that and I talked to her on the phone and she's like, yes, she sounded very, very supportive. She was going to take all this to, uh, have a staff meeting with the other departments of the city and they were going to have a talk about it to see if any of the different departments had any concern. And then she was going to get back to me. But she sounded very positive, like she didn't foresee any problem. Um, she also said that we were going to need a sign permit for every single sign, but she said, we could do all that on one permit. It's very simple and she would help us through the process. So it's like, all the signs go on one permit and we can work with her and she'll help us make that happen. So that's simpler than I was expecting. So I'm just bringing that up because besides the sixteen or seventeen people that have already responded, I'm guessing that we'll probably get an okay for all, if not most of those seven places. And I expect that, it hasn't been that long since the letters went out, but there's going to be more people that say yes. So the bottom line is, so far, I feel like the people in town are excited about this, are happy about it, people all wanting to do it so far. I think we're going to have a lot of interest and we're going to have more people that want to do it than we have money. But I feel like this is a great start and, and even if we have more than we have money for, it's a great reason to request another grant in the future. We could say, look, we already have this whole list of people saying, yes, they want to do this. And we have a whole process in place, et cetera. So I feel like it would be a good thing and that we could potentially get a grant fairly easily in the future if we do that. Um, I feel like there's a lot of potential great partners that we can have in this process. Um, obviously, the Historic Preservation Commission, Commission and the city are the two main partners that are going to have our logo on the sign. But I think there's other people we can collaborate with that are going to be very helpful, um, in providing helpful research and photos and narratives, et cetera. Some of those are going to be groups like Resurrection Day Historical Society, we've already talked to. I think there's other people like the Seward Community Library Association, for example, that might be a good partner to, you know, invite because if you're looking in history books, a lot of the photos that we would probably like to use for some of these signs are coming from them. They have that, those in their collections. Um, I also think there's a lot of individuals that could offer us substantial help in putting these things together. For example, like Doug Capra, you know, local historian and author, and Lee Plesky, for example. He's been, um, awarded for his contributions for historic, um, preservation in Seward. And there's, I'm sure, other people, lots of other people who have, uh, made great contributions to the historical knowledge of Seward. And I think as we go through this process too, some of these property owners are probably going to put a lot of time and energy into providing us what we're asking for. And so I think it's important for us to be able to credit the people that provide help for this. Um, and so I think a decision that we need to make is how are we going to credit these people that make substantial contributions to the signs or the people that we ask to partner with? So for example, if it's a group, we could potentially put their logo on the sign. Maybe their logo wouldn't be as prominent as our logo or the city's since we're the main partners, but we could still, uh, have a graphic that has logos of the different partners that we have. And if we're going to credit individuals, I think we need to, you know, figure out how we're going to do that. Can we put their name on the sign someplace? Um, either having like, uh, like a square on the sign that says, thank you to all these different contributors that lists everybody and you have the same thing on every single sign, or possibly for each individual sign, you could say, these specific people contributed to this specific sign. Just have to figure that out. But the bottom line is I think it's important and we're going to ask people for their time and help that they contribute. And so I wanted to propose that we vote, and I have, uh, what I'd like to propose that we vote is that we say, "HPC will have the option to credit both groups and individuals by name and/or logo on the signs for substantial contributions of historical information, research, photos, or sign narrative."
That sounds, that sounds great to me. I have a question though. If our word or letter lim- word limit is 250 words, that's going to include the credits, correct?
I don't know for sure. And I have put in two phone calls to Peter in the last week and a half, but he has not answered me or called back probably, probably, you know, on vacation for the holidays or something. So I don't know if, um, he may, he may consider if we can develop something like that. It might be considered just like a graphic that goes on there rather than having to pay for every word. That, that's a question that we have to discuss with him and see what's the best way to do that.
Okay. Um, could you please repeat here the, the, I guess, air grab?
My motion?
Yes.
My motion is that, my motion that is that we vote on the statement. HPC will have the option to credit both groups and individuals by name and/or logo on the signs for substantial contributions of historical information, research, photos, or sign narrative. It's also listed at the bottom of this stuff that I committed, so if you need to, like, you know, if you could...
Um, well, let's back up. We're not actually in the special meeting. We're still in the work session.
Okay.
Which, which is fine. In the work session, I, you know, I had hoped that we were going to be hashing, hashing this out, um, and then when we got into the actual meeting itself, it would be easier for us to just get right to a vote.
What I would suggest, what I would suggest is that you hold your motion for the special meeting. Right now, let's discuss. Does anybody have a different opinion? Does anybody have something else they want to say with regards to credit on the sign? I would just like to say, I was a volunteer coordinator for probably 15, 20 years, long time ago in my youth. But, um, you, you know, you have to...
You were doing that when you were 16, Sue?
Yeah, back, yeah, back, back in the dark ages. I think, I think when Columbus discovered America. But anyway, um, the point being is that you've got to really credit people. If we're going to try and build a team and a coalition of the city of volunteers, um, I think you have to give as much credit as we can give out. It's, it's a really nice way to reward people for helping and for putting out some PR that Seward actually does work together and is capable of doing this. That's my two cents. Somebody else may have a different opinion.
Well, I'd add to that that it would also, I would think, entice others to want to be involved.
And I think it's all a real balance of what we can put on the sign. I think the other thing is we'll need to develop some criteria. What is significant contribution? That has to be defined. So, you know, there, there, I, I just think there, if we have a principle, if we vote on it at the special meeting, we have a principle. The way you phrased it, Mary Ann, is it's an option. So it can merit further discussion, but in fact, we are going to, what, what your motion really says is we're going to credit as many people who helped us as possible.
Right. And in some cases, the person may be like, "Oh, no, I really don't want my name on the sign or they don't want credit." And other people might be very, I mean, these signs are kind of indestructible. They're going to be out there for a long time. And if you have a great story and you have somebody's name on the sign, it's out there for a long time for many, many, many people to read. So I feel, I feel like that's a nice thank you to the people that help us, that they're being credited to everyone for a long time.
Right. And if we want to ask them to help next time, they have a positive experience. I think it's part of planning for the future for other projects.
And I do love the idea that, um, you know, it shows how all these different people are working together to make this great thing happen in Seward. Like, well, one big happy family, all working together. So that's good.
Tongi or Sherry? Oh, Sherry.
Okay, well, um, I'm glad to have a little bit of time and, um, uh, I, I, uh, both Tongi and Mary Ann know that I, I have really been dragging my feet on this. Uh, one thing you might want to notice is on the examples in the special meeting packet, there's not one individual name on any of those examples. Um, and my, my one concern is that just by the nature of putting people's names on these signs, we will leave out people. Um, a lot, most, almost all of the information I have gathered, uh, is off of other, um, walking tours. And those people didn't leave any of their names that provided that information. So all of those past people have contributed, but they will not be named. Um, and also, I would like to bring up, uh, the subject, I would have liked to have a more of a mutual discussion on, uh, how are we going to separate who is going to get these signs and who isn't? Like, shall we do first come, first served? Or how, uh, in, 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 uh, visiting with some of these folks, um, how, I would like to hear some suggestions of how to articulate that to them, that they, you know, we may run out of money before they get a sign. I would have loved to have some visits about these things.
Well, those are two separate issues, so I think we need to separate those out. I think you're right. I do, you know, there needs to be some kind of standard for what we, um, how we choose properties to be on the tour. I don't think that's, I think that's a very reasonable request. Um, but I do also, if, just because it hasn't been done before in terms of giving people credit, doesn't mean we can't do it.
As far as the prioritizing, I was thinking that once we get...
Two separate issues, two separate issues here. Let's...
I can address that with some black and white stuff for it to some degree. The original, uh, and, and thank you, Commissioner, for allowing this valid concern. Uh, the original grant that was put in mentioned 25 specific properties that we came up with as we sat as the commission at that time. We...
Two years ago.
Yeah. So we, but we can, we, we knew that going into it, we might have some people might not be interested or who might drop off or others that might come up. We should compare that original list, which was approved by the state, to the list that we've gotten of yeses. Match those two up and let's just say that 12 of those people have already said yes. We should probably prioritize those. That's what we said we would do. And then we should say, "Hey, we haven't been successful on these other ones, but there's some additional new ones who said that they are interested." And then we can match, we can match all those lists together. But as far as the original intent for the grant that was approved by the state of Alaska, there was a list of 25 that we put out there, which they approved. And that's what they agreed to fund. Now, they will take revisions if we have reason to. I would think that the most interesting, the most salient point is what is going to be of interest to people on a tour? And what do we find to be interesting? And what is somebody going to find interesting? I don't know that they're going to stay in front of a house that we have no information on and say, "Well, that's interesting." They're going to find, I'm going to use this example of, uh, Mary Ann and I discussed, I didn't even know this, there's some house somewhere that there used to be dancers at and they had them only on, I don't remember what night of the week it was, because that was bath night. Like, I find that really interesting, right? And so that would be interesting as a point for someone to look at. And then where does that information come from and do we credit that as well? So I think it's going to come down to a combination of what we originally, what we originally proposed, what is feasible based on people are saying yes, and then us as a commission looking and saying, "Okay, we have 30 now or 35 now. Who do we think's relevant and within the scope of our work?" I think we do have to have, I think you're absolutely right, Sherry. I think that we do have to have some ongoing discussions on what we think's going to put the best walking tour together.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, that after we finally get through, like, all the people have a chance to respond and we see what the whole list is and how many we have, and, and we've been working through it, some of those are going to come, come up and be like, "Wow, this place has a fascinating story and they have all kinds of pictures and historical information and this place doesn't have anything." To me, the, the great story in the place with lots of information is probably going to go up higher on the list because it's more likely we can come up with, put together a really good sign than the person, the, the place that doesn't have hardly anything. Because if we put them on a list for later, it gives us more time, maybe we'll find something. But I think there's a, you know, we, as a group, can take our whole big list of places and come up with priorities after to get a little further. Mary Ann, I think that's a good point. I had Risi Casa Grande call me, you know, because her, she got a, a letter because of her house down the street. But she's real interested in having her business, uh, on Third Avenue, right across from Resurrect Art. And what I told her was exactly what you just said. I said, "Look, Risi," I said, "give us everything you have. Why do you think your house qualifies? Why do you think your office building qualifies? And then we can take it from there. But give us everything you have." Because we can't, I mean, we can't, because somebody said their house is old, we can't just put it on the list. So give us what you have and we'll take it from there and there's no guarantee. So, you know, she's got a lot of information that she found in the walls about the person who built the house. So give it to us and we will re, we will do additional research and then we'll see if the house qualifies or is interesting. Like you said, if it's interesting enough for people to stand in front of it and redesign.
And plus, another consideration is, for example, in the tourist day, you're thinking about Third Avenue. You want to have regular places along Third Avenue to make it good for a walking tour so people aren't like, you know, they see one place and then they have to walk like, you know, a mile before the next one. You want to have regu- regular places. And for example, Risi's business, if it's a good place, and I looked it up, it was, it's really old. It has an interesting history. It helps meet the goal of doing something like that on Third Avenue. Whereas her house on Second, although it might be old and a cool place, there's lots of places on Second Avenue. So there may be plenty to fill in of good series of signs on Second Avenue where we could like not do her house, but her business on Third might be a better fit for Third Avenue. Plus, you have to consider too, property owners may be like, "I'd rather have people come and see a sign at my business before I'm trying to bring people into my business than at my house." So if they're interested in one place but not the other, work with them and be flexible.
But all these additional properties are after we have worked on our original 25 that are listed in the...
I think so. I think so. We ha- I think Tongi's right. We have to go back to that original list first and see what we did. I mean, now, I remember, that was like my second meeting and we made a list of things we thought, um, would be great on a walking tour. So I think we should revisit that. And then, where that's done a lot of rec- it's done a lot of research on other properties that may also qualify. And I, I actually like the idea of an addendum to the map where you could have different houses as you, you know, they may not all get signed, but that doesn't mean they can't be, there can't be an addendum to the map.
Well, they could be on a map, even if they don't have a sign, they could be on a tour map that shows...
Right. There could, there can be something on a map that says, you know, I mean, all of...
Like Risi's, she, she might not have, she might have a sign at her business but not at her house, but those places could be on the tour map.
Yeah. I covet the siding on her house. Mm-hmm, it's so cool. Anyway.
Okay. So let's get back to, um, giving credit. Sherry, you say that your concern is offending people, uh, because we don't get all the people that should have been credited, press, credit on the sign. And that's a fair concern. But you also say that you don't, in the signs that are in our packet, you don't see any credit given, but there is credit given. You have the Keen Eye Mountain Turnigan Arm National Heritage Area listed. Um, you have, on the Girdwood one, you have Girdwood Park and Recreation. And again, the Keen Eye Turnigan Arm National Heritage Area. Here's four logos here. I, my glasses are not strong enough to, to make it out. Um, personally, I think if we can find a uniform, simple way of getting, giving credit uh, to people, persons or groups, like Resurrection Bay Historical Society, um, then we should do so. Yes, Sherry?
Um, uh, Cheryl, those, uh, the credits that are on those examples are all entities and I'm all for that. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with putting, uh, Seward Historical Society, giving them credit. Uh, there is, what I was saying is there's just not an individual name on there. Um, Tongi had mentioned something when, when he and Mary Ann I visited that I think is, is good. Um, the photos must be credited. And any quotes, I think, would be, it, it, it's really, um, would be very good to credit quotes. So I'm for crediting quotes and photos to individuals. However, if we must have logos, I would like to, um, confine those to the, the groups that, um, have partnered with us.
Okay, so that would be Resurrection Bay Historical Society and us. So the R two logos. And as far as giving any one, you know, person credit, that would come because they give a quote in our historic description.
See, I disagree. I believe that we need to decide some standards.
I'm just, I'm just...
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm, I'm just, you, you summed it up, but I'm on the opposite end of the spectrum in the fact that, say, we had Doug Capra help us doing the writing, then I think he should be on the sign. If, um, somebody did a heck of a lot of research on our behalf and saved us a lot of time and effort, I think their name should be on the sign. But I do agree that, you know, if you deliver donuts one morning, your name should not be on the sign. So I think there needs to be a set of standards, um, so that the people who are doing a lot of work get the credit they deserve and the people who are sort of on the fringe, we don't worry about that. And I, you know, the point being is that if we have standards and we can have a review group before we make the final decision, I have left, you know, people, sometimes people think they deserve credit when they don't. I'm happy to talk to them.
One of the questions I have though, say, for example, you're going to start the conversation with, uh, somebody and you're going to ask them upfront if they can help you with this because you're making an assumption that they have something substantial. And it seems like at that time, the conversation is like, it's good to be able to say, "We'd love your help with this. We think you have all this great information. And we, you know, we would be happy to credit you on the sign for your contribution." So usually, the way I, I see it is like, you're going to ask somebody to do a bunch of work and tell them how you're going to credit them then. Well, what happens if later on, you're like, "Well, I don't know if they gave me as much as I thought was substantial." I mean, I feel like you have to make the offer upfront. You can't like have a committee decide later after they've already helped you, are you going to give credit?
Well, that's why I thought we had to have some standards. Well, that's why I thought we had to have some standards. You have to make, you know, you, so that the offer is made with an understanding, you know? I don't know if you can put hours on it, if you can put, you know, let's say we had somebody like Doug Capra who helped us write every single one of those signs. Is that not substantial? Is that substantial?
Uh, Tongi, you need to unmute yourself. Tongi? Unmute.
I think that we came up with, at some point, if we had to get to that point, we could always make one separate sign at the origination of the tour that said thank you to all these partners, if it got to that point, if we got that involved. But I think envision, when I think of crediting people, in my mind, it's coming back to the same sign, I don't even remember which topic it was, Mary Ann, when you talked about, but the place where there was dancing that was on Saturday nights or whatever because they didn't win it on Tuesday nights or whatever night it was, because that's when the people came in off the steamships and it wasn't the same steward people, so they could dance with somebody new. And it also happened to be bath night, right?
Yeah, that was just, that was just a little thing I read in Mary Berry's book.
Then you put parentheses, Mary Berry, blah, 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 blah. And that's a quote, like, where you can look at it and say, that's where we got that information. You know, Lee Poleski, Lee Poleski remembers in the 1960s playing, I don't know what cribbage in such and such house with the local foreprophet. I mean, I'm just saying stuff. You can credit people in the narrative without necessarily having to make a big kind of thing. And then you could have a separate sign that says, we'd like to acknowledge on this walking tour created in 2021, the Resurrection Bay Historical Society, the museum, the this, the that, the rotary, the whatever, for all their time and their hours and so on spent helping us get this project together. Boom, you got like one sign that even mentions people, individuals, whatever it is, that acknowledges how this got done. But within the context of what you find out that's interesting about homes, how did you find that information? Where did it come from? Interesting, how, interesting information about your houses that you wouldn't have known just by just surmising it. Somebody provided you some cool information. I think it's actually be credited and saying where you heard it because it makes it interesting. Doug Capra, Leah Poleski, Mary Berry, give me other names, Sue or, or somebody else. Erbock, Dorothy Erbock, these are, these are.
Iris Darling.
Iris Darling, these are people, right, you know, when you're talking Brown and Hawkins, you know, you're, you're talking Hugh Darling remembers doing such and such. I think that you can provide that in a narrative and then we can do a whole business-like, kind of like signs separate or something that says, we want to credit and thank these people here. You can accomplish both things maybe that way, but I do think we need to credit people who give us the, the information that's interesting because what we're trying to do is create an interesting tour of what, what, what's, what's happened out there. I mean, you've mentioned things about, you know, Sue, if you're talking about your house, for example, what is that, where did, how do you know there was a speakeasy there? Who told you that?
Fay Gumbelton Manfey. The house was owned by her grandfather, Gustav and Clara.
That's interesting.
1905.
I'm reading the sign, I'm looking at your sign and I'm finding that interesting.
Yeah.
See? That's what's important. The Capra stuff can come, you can put in there, blah, 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 it was built in 1905 and this was a sign of a whatever, parentheses Capra. So you're still giving credit. But as far as, we do want to mention some individuals if they gave you really interesting information. Like you said, the grand, that's the granddaughter, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's, her father, her father was Guy, who was the son, there were four boys.
See, if I'm reading that, to me, that's interesting when I'm seeing front of your sign. I think that's interesting. So that's where I'm coming from as far as crediting people. It's crediting them to make it interesting.
And I think, I think there's probably real merit to what you're saying. I'm looking at somebody like Doug Capra who might go above and beyond just giving us tidbits.
It can be on a sign that says, thank you so much for Doug Capra for all their immeasurable help on this, Lee Poleski.
Exactly, there are a couple of them.
These books were helpful to us, Mary Berry's book, this book, this book, this book, this book, and helping us get the content together to put this tour together. That could be a separate deal.
A separate sign or even a separate add to the map.
Yeah, exactly, it could be on the map, that's right, it could be on the written map. That's absolutely right. As far as the actual signs themselves and a consistent message, this is the Seward Historical Preservation Society and the city of Seward that are doing this project. And that's who needs to get the most credit for it. Not because, it didn't have to have our names on it, not because I need my name on it, but because those are the entities that are making this happen. And then you can have a special thanks somewhere to the Historical Society and to the library and whatever. It doesn't need to necessarily be, they don't need to necessarily be on every logo sign. The project itself was funded by the, by the, by the, by the State of Alaska Department of Resources.
The State of Alaska probably needs to be on it.
The Seward and us, what?
State of Alaska probably does need to be on it.
DNR, us and the city are the three that need to be on every sign.
Right.
Uh, Resurrection Bay Historic Society though is also a partner.
Right, but they can be on a whole other sign, like a big sign that says, we couldn't have done this without you.
And you put it down at Hoben Park, you put it right from.
A big, you put it on the sign, on all the paper signs and everything, and we're going to use the maps or whatever, that says, we could not have done this without these partners. Just a thought.
Well, if we were going to create a separate sign that was just for that, maybe a good place to try to put it would be at the library because that'll probably identify the start.
The start of the tour according to what our grant is.
And where the museum is, and then you could, you know, bring that in as well.
I'm open for discussion, but that's, that's my.
Sherri? Unmute. Sherri? Sherri?
I love that idea. Thank you very much, Tongi.
All right. So it seems to me that we can close this work session and move into our special meeting.
Okay, can I make one comment?
Yes.
So for the special meeting, I guess what I was thinking is I could revise my proposal that I'm going to put up for voting and I could say, HPC will have the option to credit both groups and individuals by name or logo on the signs, map or plaque for substantial contributions of historical information, research, photos or sign narrative. Which basically say, we're going to credit everybody and we'll do it somewhere, whether it's on the signs or on the paper map or on a separate plaque, we want the option to credit groups and individuals for substantial contributions. Does that sound like it captures the discussion?
Are you okay with that, Sherri?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, Deputy Clerk, I saw that you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure before you guys move out of the work session that Tonga got all the information from the different committees that he needed today because that was one of the main points for the work session. So that you guys can relay, relay any information that you need to give him now while it's open to the public.
I believe that I did, but my question to you is whether I'll have either notes from this or recording of this meeting so that I can make, make sure that I capture that all properly.
It'll be on YouTube and there will be an audio recording also that's separate. I, I probably would not, I, I'll have work session notes, but.
Those notes would be.
They're, they're not, they're not verbatim, so they're not.
No, but that, that would be greatly helpful. If you could put the conclusions that we came up with and the votes that we did, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have the final conclusion from Mary Ann from her statement because that was really long and too fast for me to type.
But we'll put it up for a vote in the work session meeting. It goes up for a vote.
The special meeting, yeah. But I, I just wanted to make sure Tonga got everything he needed for tonight.
I, I did, but being that I can't communicate with everybody and say, okay, great, guys, so everybody who picked these committees, I appreciate you maybe putting that back out to the, to the group if you would, because I can't communicate via email. That sounds very sarcastic, I really don't mean for it to.
Yeah.
But I, by following the Open Meetings Act, I can't really communicate out to the whole group. So if you wouldn't mind sending that conclusion out about who's on what committees, I would appreciate that.
Well, it would be on, on the work session notes in Legislative History. Can we go over real quick if there were changes to the committees that are listed in the work session packet?
Certainly. We had the, the Historic Preservation one, which was Sue Ward, Mary Ann Benoit and Commissioner Furlong. And Mary Ann Benoit was selected as the chair. There was the marketing and communications one, which is myself and Commissioner, Commissioner Benoit, and Commissioner Benoit is chairing that. There was the volunteer, I'm sorry, the grants, I guess there was the grants and part, which was myself as the chair and/or Commissioner Sees. There was the volunteer one, which was Commissioner Sees in charge of that along with Commissioner Wolkers. And then, I apologize, Commissioner Furlong then said she would take on maps, which we kind of created on as a, as a separate production of the maps, was something that she agreed to do. Those are what I recollect as far as that.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that the people on the different committees were the same as what was included in the, the packet, so, okay.
Sue Ward was, Sue Ward was also added to grants and in kind of.
That's right. That's it, that's how I was trying to remember. See, I was going off my mind.
I, I do have that, I do have that noted, yes.
All right.
Yep. That's great.
And then, did you guys want to set up a date for the next, next work session? Or a couple of work sessions?
I see us as needing those at least twice a month and at some point probably weekly.
Right, so at this point though, do you want to set up something for January?
I would suggest that we meet again at six o'clock. I think we have a second Thursday, a regular meeting in January. And why don't we just set a work session for six, or six, I don't know, five or six, right before that meeting?
That's what we used to do, right before the meeting.
Right, but somehow Jessica just needed all one regular meeting.
Well, that was because I believe the commission at the time decided they didn't need the work sessions.
Well, that's probably because we went from four meetings to having like 12 meetings a year, so we probably were stretching that out.
Yeah, so I did include.
But I like that idea. I do like that idea.
We'll go with Sherri's, we'll go with Sherri's idea. So the meeting will be the 14th. Did I begin it? What? Did I just hear a oh? No, okay.
You heard a yes.
Okay, great. So it begins at six and what we, what we would do is we'd go six to 7:30 work sessions and then 7:30 generally, you know, not past nine for the regular meeting.
And if we need additional work sessions, we can schedule them. I think as the grant develops, we may need more.
Well, I guess the, the question will be.
We have, we have a week before that, that we could schedule a work session if we wanted.
What day is that?
Well.
It would be the seventh.
Um, yeah.
It's on Thursday?
Yes.
I can't meet any other Thursdays.
Okay.
Because I have pioneers on the first Thursday and I have Resurrection Bay, of which I'm a T A member, the Resurrection Bay meeting on the fourth Thursday. Thursdays are, are my meeting dates.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm a member of that too.
Right. So it's just Thursday, you know, even the lady who cuts my hair says, she knows not to schedule me on a Thursday, I will not be an anchor, I will be here.
Um, Tongi?
Oh, she's assigned for me. What's that?
How does Friday the eighth sound to you?
Fridays are tough.
About your schedule?
Fridays are, Fridays are tough, I think, for everybody.
Oh, okay. Oh, well, I was thinking with you being out of town, okay.
I'm here and there, I'm, I'm in town, I'm in town later this week, I mean, but that doesn't really matter. If I'm in town or out of town at this point, I'll be physically in, in Seward for a couple of days, a few days this week, but we're all doing this remotely, right?
It doesn't matter with Zoom, yeah. So, um.
Fridays are just not great because then you start getting into family planning.
What about, what about next Tuesday, the fifth?
You know, I don't really want to schedule another meeting before the, our other meeting.
You've got committees that gotta get together.
P and Z has.
We've got stuff we've gotta do.
P and Z has a meeting on Tuesday. There's a schedule attached to the back of that packet.
It's canceled, but it's canceled.
Oh, you're right, thank you.
Let me, let me.
But it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, we're not going to do another meeting before the second Thursday in January.
If I could, if I could inform this and go back to the comments that Mary Ann made earlier, Mr. Benoit, we have 17 properties that are interested. Now we need to close the loop on some of those with the committees and start talking to them about getting some information, filling out that spreadsheet, figuring out what photos they do have or don't have, who's gonna help. You know, once we decide on this thing of if we're gonna be working with Doug Capra or Leah Poleski or whoever and giving them credit and not giving them credit or whatever it is that we're doing, we've got a lot of work to do in the next two weeks. I think we could come back and work a report for two weeks. We could set an agenda for that session, Chair Sees, and we could say, we're gonna discuss X, Y and Z, we're gonna do this work, like, we're gonna look at, we've already got some things written, so let's say in that work session, we're gonna look at five narratives and see if everybody agrees with those 250 words. Great, we can come out of that session with some, with some signs that are.
Actual signs.
Ready to do, yeah. So I think we need those two weeks to get ready. After that, we could start meeting more regularly, but I think for now with this, I mean, because remember, the letters just went out and I'm excited because all of those things have come in in like the last four or five days. They've all been like, Tongi, I'm really interested, Tongi, I'm really interested because I can put up the contact, right? Blah, 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 I really want to do. So all that is really fresh news, I have a feeling I'll get more. And then the committees can start working on that. Mary Ann, can you?
Yeah.
Now, from a, from a marketing communication standpoint, we're not gonna be on volunteer stuff yet, there's gonna be some work to be done from grants because I'm gonna need to contact the Ms. Kingsland and make sure we got this report put together, everybody's gonna get their hours turned in, we gotta put a narrative together, what we've been working on, get that sent to state, this is all the work to do in the next two weeks. And then I think we're gonna have a really exciting meeting on the 14th.
And Sherri, I've already been communicating with Deborah Hofmeister about those Quanta huts and communicated with Resurrect Art about their signs for their place and been going back and forth with, with people and getting. But one question I had was, so when we have this meeting on the eighth and we start at six and we go to 7:30 before our regular meeting, is that, is that for like all of us or are we just doing different?
All of us, on the 14th.
All of us. And so the 14th?
Yeah.
All of us to get together for an hour and a half, we'll have an agenda come up beforehand. Chair Sees has to put the, has to put the proposed agenda, I think, out. So the agenda, we'll talk about what we're talking about in an hour and a half, we'll do actual work. We'll probably look at, we will do laydown on probably, I would think they do laydown on all the writings that we have, on the things we've already submitted, an update on what properties have said yes, and then we'll sit down and be like, hey, let's, let's get some stuff done here.
We actually, Sue and I have already worked on a narrative for her house and I've already edited it, we have it down to 250 words, so Sherri actually has the narrative done for one house, but we don't have the pictures yet. We're still kind of working on that.
So there's work to do between now and then, and then we can also see who else might be willing to help on pulling more information down. Commissioner Furlong and you, you, so Commissioner Furlong, Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Benoit getting together in the next two weeks to figure out where you're sitting on those things. And obviously feeding the information out of when I get back.
Cheryl, you and I have some paperwork we need to get done, just as administrative.
The P and Z, yeah.
Well, we have, we have, you know, a report to city council, we have, we just have some paperwork. I think we could probably knock it out now because we have to set up priorities for next year. So we've got some paperwork issues that we need to get done.
Yeah.
A lot to be done in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
I'm excited. So do we have a vote to get to?
We have a special meeting to get to, we're still in the work session.
Let's do it.
Okay.
What else can we do in the special meeting besides this one vote?
Well, we need to adjourn the work session first.
Yeah.
Chair, Chair Sees?
Yes, this work session of January 28th, I mean, December 28th, 2020 is now adjourned. Thank you.
I have 7:29.
How are we getting to the other sessions?
Now, I'd like to open the special meeting of December 28th, 2020, at 7:30. And we will be discussing.
Well, we've got an agenda, I know there's some comments probably coming.
Oh, Deputy Clerk, did you receive anything that you need? Deputy Clerk, did you receive anything that you needed to read into the record?
Well, we do need to, we do need to follow the agenda and normal protocols per meeting.
We gotta open, we gotta take attendance, yeah, okay. Okay.
Page four.
Thank you. Okay. You're gonna call us to order?
Are you asking me, or?
Yes.
Yeah, no, you-
Well, that would be you, Chair Sees.
Really?
Yeah, you call to order, she does the roll call.
Oh, well, I already did the call to order. Didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Yeah, okay, so we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Remember, if you're standing.
To the flag of the United States-
The United States-
America, and to the Republic of- For which it stands-
Which it stands.
One nation- Under God-
Under God.
Indivisible-
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, I'll proceed with roll call. LeBrecq?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Walkers is not present. Furlong?
Yeah.
Benoit?
Here.
Chair Sees?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did we receive any citizen comments that need to be read into the record?
We do have a citizen comment. We have a citizen comment by email from Carol Griswold. She lives inside city limits. Dear Historic Preservation Commission, I urge the commission to schedule a special meeting to consider and pass a resolution in support of Council Ordinance 2020-15, amending the land use plan to rezone the Jesse Lee home parcels from multifamily to park. This special meeting would have to be prior to the council meeting on January 11th, 2021. Public support for this rezone has been overwhelming by the council, public, and P&amp;Z, including individual Historic Preservation Commission members, to honor the historic site as a memorial park. Please add the official voice of the Historic Preservation Commission to record as a resolution of support for Council Ordinance 2020-15 to rezone the historic Jesse Lee home parcels from multifamily to park. Best, Carol Griswold.
Thank you.
That's all the citizen comments I have. Is there anybody on? There's no online comments? That's all of the comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so approval of agenda and consent agenda, it's a special meeting, so... We don't have minutes to approve or anything like that. Do we, somebody wanna make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
I second it. Thank you. We don't have special orders, presentations, or reports?
Oh, I still have to call, I still have to call the vote.
Call for the vote, call for the vote.
Sorry, I apologize, Madam Clerk.
No problem. For approval of agenda and consent agenda, Ward?
Yes.
LeBrecq?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Benoit?
Yes.
Chair Sees?
Yes.
Madam Chair, your motion passes unanimous, there are no consent items on the agenda.
Thank you. We have no special orders, presentations, or reports, we have no unfinished business for new business. We have approved the format to be used for creating signage related to the CLG Grant 20005, Seward Public Education Signage Project. You'll find that on page five. In that we just finished a work session going over this, I think I'm going to ask Commissioner Benoit to take this part of our meeting.
Okay, so we had a good discussion in the work session about the sign design, and I would like to propose that I'd like to make a motion that we vote on the following statement. HPC will have the option to credit both groups and individuals by name and/or logo on the signs, maps, or plaque for substantial contributions of historical information, research, photos, or sign narrative.
If I could have you-
I second that.
If I could have you repeat for plaques for the substantial-
For substantial contributions of historical information, comma, research, comma, photos, or sign narrative.
Thank you, Benoit. And, I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
I was.
Is that Ward?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, Cheryl?
No, the motion is carried, and that's all we have on our special meeting.
Well, we haven't actually called the vote for that yet.
Deputy Clerk?
Call for the vote, just call for the vote.
Oh, right, right, right.
Were there any other comments or discussion? There wasn't any, correct?
Correct, but you always make a motion for discussion. No other discussion, call for the vote.
Okay. The motion for the vote is, HPC will have the option to credit both groups and individuals by name or logo on the signs, maps, or plaques for the substantial contributions of historical information, research, photos, or sign narratives. Ward?
Yes.
Benoit?
Yes.
LeBrecq?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Chair Sees?
Yes.
Chair Sees, your motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any informational items or reports. The next item is citizen comments. At this point, Madam Clerk, I have a question. We did receive citizen comments in the beginning from Carol Griswold, and she's requesting a special meeting in order for us to pass a resolution supporting the rezoning of the Jesse Lee land. Are we allowed to take that up at this point because she submitted that, or not?
Madam Chair, you can make a comment under the next section, which is Board and Administration Comments and Response to Citizen Comments. But that's not an option that can be brought up for voting on, due to this being a special meeting for a very specific item.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any citizen comments?
There are no citizen comments for the end, and again, IT, are there any online ones? There are no online ones, so there are no citizen comments for the end.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any comments?
I have a comment, no, go ahead, Ms. Furlong, Ms. Furlong.
I feel completely ashamed of myself for not suggesting that myself. She is so right to, I consider to reprimand, she is so right, that should have been so much on our radar. And, yes, I, I'm in agreement with Carol Griswold's comment. Commissioner LeBrecq?
Agreed with that. At the last meeting that we had, I actually reported on this, I attended the P&amp;Z meeting where P&amp;Z voted unanimously, saved Chair Eklund to designate the Jesse Lee home tract as being parked, moved to park. We made a decision at the last meeting that we in fact, rather than write a resolution, would simply write a thank you to P&amp;Z to say, thank you, P&amp;Z, for agreeing to designate this as park and forwarding this to City Council for their consideration. The reason that I, at least personally, as a personal citizen, did not feel that we necessarily need to do a resolution as a group, was because the city of Seward had already spoken in droves, in scores of people on the survey, and had already all expressed their opinion that it should move to park land. The P&amp;Z also agreed, so in our being in harmony with P&amp;Z and working together with them this year, rather than take their thunder in this particular thing, my personal opinion was that I just say, thank you. And I believe that in the last meeting we had, with Chair Ward, that we decided we just would do a thank you. I know that I forgot myself to mention it again, but you are right, that we've forgotten that, in that sense, that we probably just needed to forward that. I know, like, I mentioned it, but I never thought up with saying, hey, does someone need to write a thank you letter to P&amp;Z? I think it sends the same message of saying, we're in agreement without having to do a resolution specifically, because we're in agreement with what they're doing, and they're fighting negative fight. So, again, open to whatever other commissioners might say, and I respect what you're saying, Commissioner Furlong, but I do believe that we don't have to vote per se, because I believe at the last meeting, we already said that we were going to do that. Am I correct on that?
You are. And that's one of the administrative duties that Cheryl and I need to get together and do. We have several of those, because we need to write that so that it can come before, you know, our letter. I don't know if you guys want to approve it, or you just give us carte blanche to do it, but that's on our list. So, that needs to get done in the next couple of weeks, Cheryl, right? Yeah, that's on our list, we've got several things, a lot of paperwork issues, that's one of them.
We don't need a vote, though, right? Because we already had the discussion.
I believe unless, unless you want us to send out copies so that you can approve the wording, I don't know. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Ward, the way it was decided at the meeting, it does not need to come before the commission for approval. It was-
That's what I thought, I thought, I thought you and I, Cheryl, could get together and write that letter, and then get it to P&amp;Z and CC the city council for the commission.
So, in my response to Carol Griswold's request that we actually do a resolution, by doing a resolution, it is in the record that the Seward Historic Preservation Commission was behind this decision to convert the Jesse Lee land into park land. So, it would really be good if we could call a quick meeting, has to be publicly noticed, and actually do a resolution to this effect. I mean, if we wait till our next meeting, council will have already met.
Right, and I think our letter is already appropriate. And I agree with Tonga, we don't steal P&amp;Z's thunder. And I have enough to do right now without another special meeting to do something we've already done.
Ms. Furlong?
I'm in agreement with Chair Sees. I would like to call a special meeting on Tuesday, very short, perhaps half an hour, on that Tuesday. Well, one of these Tuesdays, probably the 11th, I don't know if there's one or two, and just make it like a half an hour or less, 15 minutes, just so that we do have it on record that we did pass a resolution supporting that that land be zoned park.
I have a suggestion. I would like to do the letter that was already decided at last meeting, supporting this, thanking planning and zoning. And then at our next meeting on the 14th, I would like to pass a resolution for our support of the Jesse Lee land being rezoned to park land.
If I might, my only hesitation in doing a resolution is we have limited political capital as far as what we decide to get behind and not get behind. We've already taken up some fights earlier this year on some zoning things. We now have a planning and zoning commission that's already in alignment. With what we wanna say, and they're willing to take that fight on, and willing to see it through, not fight, but to take that on and to see it through to City Council. So, I think that a letter reaffirming that we think that as well allows it to be in the hands as it should be, because I believe that when we were raising some concerns before about zoning, we were maybe in opposition to what another group had been thinking, and we were actually in agreement with. So, I think that a letter accomplishes the same without necessarily doing a resolution for something that another group already came up with. That's my only hesitation. I will support whatever you guys say, if you wanna have a special meeting, I'm happy to be there. I just think that we're trying to work really closely with P&amp;Z, and in some cases, a simple thank you is enough. Just my, but I'm open to whatever you guys say.
I agree. But, again, gets recorded in our history. And we are the Historic Preservation Commission, we fought to save the Jesse Lee home, at least in part. The Jesse Lee home has been a very big part of Seward, if not an eyesore to many people. It has been and still has a valuable part of history, our history. And I believe it's important for our commission to do a resolution. But I am willing to do the letter and let that stand for now, but then at our next meeting, to keep everybody from having to come and meet again before the meeting, at the next meeting, we will pass a resolution in support of the zone change to park land.
Okay. Chair Sees, when is that, when is that next council, or, when's the next council meeting?
Oh, the 11th, I think.
So, then we would have to meet before the 14th, because we said we were gonna meet on the 14th, right?
No, I know, I know, no, I know. Okay, that's, but, I'm not saying that we would have to do this before council meets. Obviously, if we wait till our meeting, we miss council's meeting, we're also gonna miss planning and zoning's meeting. But the thank you will go to planning and zoning. The important point at this point is to get a resolution on the record from our commission supporting this zone change.
Am I me?
Yes, Chair.
I just wonder how that's gonna look. I think that the city council is going to take a vote on the 11th. And I, the whole point- And, uh, I, I, the whole point of, of resolution, I think, will be lost, because the, the point of the, of the resolution would be to influence the council members to vote, uh, to zone that property as parkland. And, uh, if they've already voted, they're going to vote a yea or nay. It's going to go one way or another on the 11th. And what good will it do for us to pass a resolution afterwards? It just seems out of order to me.
That's a good point. I wonder if there's a public hearing? Is, is there a public hearing? Do we know that?
It was introduced at the last, uh, city council meeting. So, and it is under-
So does that mean that we-
It is under, uh, public hearing on the agenda with enactment to follow.
Okay. Um...
So there would be opportunity for public comments on it during the public hearing comment section.
Now, which point?
Commissioner DeBos, Benoit?
Uh, just in listening to this whole discussion, I think I'm in agreement with, um, Cheryl. I feel like we should do the letter, but I also am fine with doing the resolution. And I think if we're going to do a resolution, we should do it before the City Council meeting. So, if we're going to take the time to do a resolution, it has as much impact as, um, possible, so that they have that available and see our support before they vote. I, I'm not sure, Tommy, you said something about we have limited political capital. I try not to think like that. I feel like we have unlimited political capital. We can do whatever we want. If it's the right thing to do, we should do it. I'm, so I'm all for doing both things, and I'm fine with having a special meeting, uh, in advance of that, just to get it done. I would hope that somebody could take on writing this resolution, and we could keep this meeting to, like, 15 minutes or something simple and just vote on it and be done. That would be my preference.
I, I-
I support that.
Commissioner Furlong?
I would just like to add, uh, a comment about a visit I had with, um, uh, that lady that's the head of, uh, SHPO. I forget her name now. Um, anyway, I inquired, uh, as, because the state could, they have the option of, had, I want to say, they did have at one time the option of purchasing that Jesse Lee property. And, uh, they didn't feel like it was a right fit for a state, uh, piece of property at that time, and that was years ago, I'm sure. But she actually mentioned to me, that was duty business. She actually mentioned to me that there's only been two times in the history of state parks that they actually voted to grant, a huge grant, twice in the history of this state. And the one that was successful was to Kennebec. And I'm, I, I, I am so embarrassed for the city of Stewart. They voted a huge amount of money. This was the only second time in the history of the state that they voted to support preserving something, and we didn't do it.
That's, that's bad, but before our time, we did our best, coming in at the ninth hour. Um, it is what it is, and at this point, the best thing we can do is support the preservation of the land, making it parkland, and, um, placing a memorial for the Jesse Lee home. Um, but, getting back to this special meeting to do the resolution supporting the rezoning of the land to parkland, um, Commissioner Ward has already stated that she's too busy. If I can get Commissioner Furlong, myself, Commissioner Benoit, and LeBrec to commit to doing this, then the four of us, as a quorum, we can vote to, uh, create the resolution and have it submitted to the council. Um, yes, Deputy Clerk?
I, I'm not sure if this is an appropriate discussion at this point, uh, Chersey's, because it is supposed to be just closing comments.
Oh, yes, okay.
As in just giving closing comments, uh, not a discussion. Uh, if a special meeting is requested, then, uh, just as a reminder, uh, the chair can call for a special meeting, uh, two commissioners can call for a special meeting, or the city manager can call for a special meeting. So, uh, you just need to get with me tomorrow if you guys are planning for a special meeting, uh, if, if your plan is to have one next Tuesday. Because we will, uh, it would be nice to have that set, uh, tomorrow so that we can get it into the city calendar for public notice.
So, can we say yea or nay right now?
Well, it's not a voting matter, it's just a comment, it was closing comments.
We can make comment. Can we make some closing comment?
Well, I think we're getting a little, uh, far from-
Closing voting.
-a comment to discussion, so...
Commissioner LeBrec?
I only want to make the closing comment that, um, as you present this to our, to our deputy clerk, um, I would have some availability, depending on what you decide. Um, and also to say that I just want to be clear, I was at that P&amp;Z meeting where that designation was suggested, and I spoke out as a citizen in person for Jesse Lee home being preserved for the parkland. So please don't misunderstand me, I was only speaking to procedures, not to my public as, as, as private citizen, um, not being in favor. I'm definitely in favor of that happening. And thank you very much for, um, having this special meeting to get a whole heck of a lot of work done tonight. I feel really good about that. And thank you, um, for that, uh, for all the work tonight, and for administration and for all of you for pulling this information, for pulling this meeting together tonight. Super helpful, I'm feeling extremely positive about the responses that we're getting. I only feel blessed, I feel a little, I feel a little bit guilty about being the one that gets the emails, so I haven't quite figured out who I'm allowed to send those emails back out to once they come to me, but I feel pretty excited about what I'm getting from people and their excitement about the project. That's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Ward?
I'm just glad to see Cheryl Furlong. You know Cheryl, I would not even recognize you on the street. We have actually never met. So I'm very pleased, very pleased. Now, if I see you downtown, I will say hello. Anyway, that's the only comment I have.
Commissioner Furlong?
I appreciate all the free discussion. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Benoit?
I just want to say I'm, I'm really happy that we have citizens in our community like Carol Griswold that are willing to, they care about these kind of things, they want to let us know, they want our help, and I'm very supportive of, of, um, you know, trying to help make this happen, so I'm just saying on the record, I'm supportive of all that. I also wanted to say thank you to everybody in this commission that's been working really hard on this walking tour, um, the signs. And like, like Tom, he said, I've been really excited that we have all these people that are saying yes, and then, you know, and the process is starting to talk to some of these people. They're so excited to find out about the history and, and as I've been working on a little bit, it's like a treasure hunt. You find out these super cool things about these properties, and it's just really kind of a magical experience that I have been enjoying working with all of you on, and I look forward to working with some of these property owners to tell these amazing stories. So, thanks everyone for all of your help. And for Karen, too, for taking care of all of our letters and getting them out to people. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, we do, we do thank you, um, for all you do, and for getting up here tonight and coordinating all of this. Um, Commissioner Benoit, I just really want to thank you because I know that you have been putting in, uh, quite a lot of effort and time, and I really appreciate that. And, um, Commissioner LeBrec, you as well, Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Furlong. In fact, Commissioner Furlong, we didn't even go to your Stewart Historic Location note that you brought in tonight, um, but I do want to thank you for that. They certainly will not go to waste, um, so thank you for bringing that in for us. Um, and a final comment will be that, um, the clerk will be in touch with you to let you know about, uh, a special meeting coming up. And with that, I'd like to adjourn. So, at 8:00 PM on December 28th, 2020, this special meeting is adjourned. Yay.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Goodbye.